Hey, things are going well. We have, in addition to the inspections that our firm does, we have an independent testing company that tests concrete and soil and things, and they actually take things to a lab and break, you know, take concrete samples and soil samples and all that. It's called Atlas, and there's a contract with them, and you guys sign that contract with them, and that's in the budget. We have a budget line item which you all have seen called general conditions, and that is testing and temporary facility, temporary roads and temporary HVAC and things. That budget fund is in good shape. So, we're in here again, two times in a row, and we're not asking for any money. But, anyway, this testing company has done a great job, this testing company's done a great job, and thanks to Jack Lawson and others, the quality is very, very high, and it's due to the contractors and everyone. But, we need to, the first contract you had, we've run up very close to that total number of dollar figure, and we need to get an extension for these guys of about forty-five hundred dollars. And like I say, it's budgeted, it's in the budget, and we'll need to get this signed, because we have some more, a lot more film material to be brought out there to be tested. We've got to test the concrete on the sidewalks, which we haven't got the board yet, and we'll have to test all that asphalt out there, and crushstone, proof roll and all that. So, we need to, I'd like to have your permission for one of you to sign this extension for Atlas for forty-five hundred dollars. And, again, it's, I'm sorry, it's four thousand, sorry. Sorry about that. So, it's all good, it's all funded, it's not additional money, it's all budgeted. So, that's pretty much it. Again, we want to thank, I said that last time, Sarah, Heather, and Bob Little. And also Corporal Shane Stein has come out now, and he's getting caught up into what we're doing. He's done a great job, I mean, he's got a big job in front of him to catch up to, you know, up to running speed, don't you think, Bob? He's done an excellent job. He's out there, Bob was out there with us pretty much all day today, and we appreciate that. But, anyway, that's kind of what we've got here. If you guys are okay with that, we'll need one of you, and it doesn't matter.
Oh, sure, Doug.
Yeah, whatever. Ron, if you, and there's two there, and you keep one, and we'll take one, and we'll, we'll get out, we'll get out of here.
This is all, you can't get me in. So, this is just coming out of the company, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in, it's budgeted, in the budget line, so, but, anyway.
I move we do extend the contract for Atlas for the sum of four thousand dollars for the additional testing at the new general facility.
Any more discussion, questions? Say aye. You keep, you'll, keep one, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. One for Sarah and one for me, right?
I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Being out there working with you, knowing you got our back, so, we've been, we've been, we appreciate your help, too, and all, we appreciate being very much, very much.
Think we're gonna have a really nice facility, and something we're all gonna be proud of. Well, we'll get out of your way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, Jack, thank you, and look at the approval of the contract for wood environment infrastructure incorporated stormwater management. She's a good kid, you know?
So, we had sent out a request or proposal, there were four different seminars, four different seminars. I had a team of five look at them, and an ex-county engineer, a couple people involved with the stormwater, we had the surveyor. Anyway, wood was selected, they were the lowest bid, and it was nice, but that's, the bid was just a part of the review by the review team. So, it's worth a sum of sixty-five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, and that will come up with kind of an ordinance to help us set some standards for stormwater management. The master plan is really just a high-level kind of plan, doesn't really select any particular spots, but it will have some technical standards involved, so when people do develop, they will have certain things they have to do with any, any stormwater that would be generated because they've paved an area, or they've built up an area, or whatever, but they just can't dump it off on the neighborhood, would you agree? So, any comments?
Well, I think echoing David's comment there, it's one of the most often complaints we get, that my neighbors running all this stormwater off on my property, or every time it rains, I flood, and come on out here, it's ankle-deep, knee-deep. Most counties are putting in some, some good language about stormwater, and I've been attending a number of different seminars that Indiana, a group called State of Indiana Cooperative Evasive Management.
Good events, too.
Yeah, they give us little pens, till we remember the name. But, basically, they, they're a volunteer group, and they'll come out and do, one thing they found is there's a lot of invasive plants, you see all this tall weed with white flowers on the top, it's poison hemlock, it's not good stuff. It's stuffed up in short water, and you put in regular native plants, and it helps absorb the water, trees help absorb the water. So, they really advocate some plantings, and good native plants, and getting rid of all the visitors. Bobby's out there, he'll tell you, the ditches are full of this stuff, they are just full of all kinds of bad stuff. So, if we can have somebody take a look at the county, and Wood really did have a very thorough, I thought a very good outline on what they want to do and how they want to do it, so, I was happy to support, support the harmony of the county.
Some of the first thing we're gonna do is try to help people in the county know what's the intent, so not just go out and throw out ordinances and say, "This is what you should do," but try to help, just let people know kind of the, the object, right? How we can do things. Yeah, especially with some of the flooding, we've had, we've had it. Behind, well, we should have had it, but we had probably, not that we can help that, but I mean, I think our zoning ordinance had five lines that talked about stormwater in it, so, yeah, it was, I think we put something together. And there's, there's a good starting point, LTAPE is involved in stormwater management, so they have kind of a starting point for ordinance, so, we'll start there and modify it for what Jefferson County's more, this municipal stormwater management plan.
Give us some teeth to help enforce and keep this from happening, the neighbors report that.
Oh, can't, can't control the weather nature. She's gonna dump a lot of rain, she's gonna dump a lot of rain, so, can't be able to handle it, so that's what we're trying to do.
Issues over, who'll address?
Yeah.
In that respect.
I move that we accept the contract presented by Wood, exactly, Wood Environmental, Wood Environmental Infrastructure Solutions for the Stormwater Management Plan, it's a whole cost of sixty-five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
I like the idea, so, any more questions or comments?
So, we should, once we get started, it's about a nine-month process, I don't have a ready.
Thank you. Next to have approval of contract for capital assessment and management.
This is the service that was explained by Mr. Heller last time that he was here. Basically, we will receive, he will gather our information, will receive the capabilities of depreciating and adding items to that, and it will last for years to come, hopefully get us up to speed quickly.
I think even, even more beyond that, I could kind of talk about, not really the actual focus of a lot of what he does, but a lot of the plan, the plan, for those things that are reaching the end of the life, we can look forward and say, "Hey, let's start making plans to update those," or.
Absolutely. And Pat is working on an ordinance amendment to change that to the ten-thousand-dollar mark, and he's going to get that to me next week, I believe, so you guys could have your first reading at, or you can look over it, and then if you guys choose to move forward, have the first reading at this meeting.
So, so, we're not, you just want?
I just need the contract accepted, and then we're gonna put the plan, we have to have the ordinance afterwards.
Okay, so, this is the contract. So, I move we accept the contract with, should I just, Ron Heller, I'm sure you've got a different name, what's his name?
No, he's an independent contractor.
So, Ron, Mr. Ron Heller, who will do a capital asset management point for the county, so, we have one for roads, just one for all the other items greater than ten thousand dollars. And yes, he will be, will be publicized?
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Any more questions or comments?
Yeah, it's your final, I think, probably a good recent attitude, but.
So, it's kind of passive. All those in favor, say aye. The next, I will see if Bobby's out there in the hallway.
Bobby? There he is. Hi, Bobby. I was staying out of what, still I was needing. Making me nervous. I think in one of the last meetings, I mentioned the bridge inspection, and I've had you guys sign the paper, but I had to send that all to N dot blank first to get approval, so, we'll just re-energize that, so that I can get your signatures, and that was awarded to United, and that bridge inspection was for the grand total over the next two years of one hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. And that'll keep all of our bridges safe, or at least it's just informed of what it is worth, and they provide very valuable services, and schedule replacements, and important to be done, so, yeah, I'll just discard this one, we'll pass that one up to you guys, upon your approval.
I move we accept the contract with United Consulting for the consulting contract for county bridge inspections, for a sum of one hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and four thousand seven hundred and fifty.
More questions or comments? If not, those in favor, say aye.
I'll keep that moving along, and I was able to locate another used dump truck. It was actually a, started out, its previous life was a semi, and it was getting up with it with a ten-foot bed and cylinder and everything that we worked for our snow removal. Kind of leading up to this, I've had a few people come in and look at, trying to revamp some of our old trucks, because the new ones are on such a back order with parts and limited availability. To repair some of those trucks, they really told me it wasn't a very good option, because some of the cab mounts were so rough on them, they haven't completely broke yet to where they're still safe to drive, but there's no availability of new cabs to be able to basically retrofit our existing dump trucks. I was able to locate this one, it's a 2016 Kenworth, it's a T three seventy, and it's available at seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Get your approval for that, I can move forward, but there is money in the budget for the purchase of the equipment, and our equipment on our own. That one will actually be a very good fit to replace the freightliner truck that we have on our total patcher also, so that freightliner would be the first truck that I would probably, most likely be liquidating, and there would be a sterling that's very close right behind that, get rehomed somewhere that we are not currently using, I might get a bit more money for it.
Could we update that a little later?
Yes, I'm working on the quote for that now, if this all moves through.
Accept twenty-sixteen Kenworth T three seven. All right, any more questions or comments?
Soon as I get a check.
All those in favor, say aye.
It won't take very long, though, because that one's sitting in Indianapolis, so that definitely helps out. The paving is, has reached to the point that it is substantial, completely, they finished it up there on telegraph yesterday. There's a couple places I've got the engineer come to look at, that there was, we'll see if it needs improvement, so I've got a, basically an unbiased set of eyes to look at. They are applying shoulderstone to the ones that they had done earlier, and they're running those basically the same route, everything will be able to get past them, so we're not gonna be issuing road closures for those, they'll let the local traffic through, because it won't be the full width paving like we were doing with the paving. Chip seal projects will be going through until it looks like we'll wrap those up at the end of this month, everything keeps going very well on those, they are working on popular bridge right now, which was our gravel road conversion. That has come on very well, but did get a little bit of a rain delay on Tuesday, when we originally planned to start that, compounded with the rain delay, the truck that was bringing the emulsion broke down, so, everybody was having a good day on Tuesday, to say the least. We still keep working on some brush control, we'll get back on the, a little bit more of bush hogging whenever we get things freed up, because basically right now with the chip seal, it's all hands on deck. We've been kind of divvying out the, had a few complaints after all the nice little water that we get, so that's good that there's a stormwater management program coming along, so, some of these places we might be able to address and fix, and some, that's just kind of a way to get the automated, and there's not a real good fixable.
Four hours of rain, two hours of water.
I've never had water back, and I'm too far off the road for me to complain and go fix my problem, but I've never had water come up to my walkout, and it'd be that far from coming inside the building, and it's a pretty good slope, because I've got, it's very well-drained, I sit down, ooh! We had to shop back going in the house, and I'm outside the leafboard after the rain this, we're trying to encourage it to leave, but it wasn't going fast enough.
It's been some pretty hefty wind, because there were several trees.
Several trees, yeah, yeah, but I think they started Tuesday morning, about four o'clock in the morning, free removal before we got into the chip seal, but we moved back to about nine o'clock, because it looked like that was when the weather was supposed to basically be gone, and we'd be able to move on. The weatherman didn't tell me, he was gonna have four inches, and we was trying to push that envelope, so, it's all coming together. Then we did get a phone call from out there, they were very, pretty stupid, very happy to see that gravel road down, and they didn't move it to a hard surface.
Yeah, they did, there's some.
I know a few of them was having a rough day yesterday, too, when I called.
Yeah.
Anything else, I'll, I'll get out of the seat. Thank you, guys, appreciate what you're doing, thank you.
Troy is here. Would you be next, sir?
Sure. Just a real quick update on our moving project. The fairgrounds has been completely moved, evacuated, whatever words you wanna use. Well, our occupants, but all of the equipment, all the personal protective gear, all the pandemic supplies, all that stuff, has been located to the new building. We had till the thirty-first with the Fair Board, and I was able to get that building cleaned and swept on the thirtieth, and the keys were burned on the thirtieth, so we actually were there, so. The, thanks for that goes to Ron Kroger, Fire Chief at Hanover, and some of the resources that they have, they can bring the bear, I'll help us get that moved. Bobby being busy with chipping seal, and as you said, all hands on deck, we were having trouble figuring out how we were gonna do that, so, option C presented itself over the weekend, and I took advantage of it, so, so, that, that's done, but it was with Hanover's help, and we're appreciative of that. The, the building alarm has been installed, so the building is alarmed now, protected that way, and Sarah has a fresh set of keys and alarm codes and everything for you guys, for whatever reason you may need those. And I think, I think that's it for now, there's a couple other things that I'm working on.
Do you want to write a letter to the Hanover Board?
I, sure. I mean, I, I mean, I've thanked them, and, yeah, it was, it was huge, so, I, I've done my thank you, but I mean, if, if you guys would like to write a letter, I think that would be very, very good, or I'd be happy to draft it for you.
Well, if you want to start, sure. Sure. Very, very appreciate that, because that's our, that's where we get done.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. And I think that's it for now, like I said, a couple other things we're working on, and we're not quite ready to update on that, so, anything else for me, questions? Yep, no problem, thank you.
All right, well, I just, I just came from a meeting, so I know the current population of twenty-four. We're not going down, we're going down. Forty, over forty thousand, the rest of there, or two, four, two or four here, forty out. Yeah. 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 There's a talk about the deal, the meeting this morning, it's ahead of schedule, and thanks for going, and Brian and Jill, the men that they were picking the colors for the administration, for the cell doors, you know, fairly, fairly nice looking building, and.
Two guys picking out colors, that'll either be very, very plain, or there'll be some.
Yeah, it's not QVC, it's in the cell block, doors, air bay, those are to be here, seventh rate, so they'll be installed, so it's, it's really starting to take shape and look like a little bit, it's gonna be a nice facility, and, that's all.
So, we received the scope, and the proposed scope from CNT, Crawford, Murphy, and Tully on the post-study, so we'll, we'll pass that around, we can start with that, and have some discussions on what we'll do with the, yeah, economic development, environmental development, so. That was Grove this weekend, big turnout?
Yeah.
It was past weekend, so, I imagine Chelsea will be a big turnout this weekend, and came and helped us with the, took some, some of the funds that we provided, and paved the entrance, and one of the sides, so, it looks good. Really appreciative of that.
Yeah. The only thing I got is the next treatment process, treatment training, whatever we want to call it. Now, we now have a community coordinator, Michael Hicks, nice information if anybody would like it, they're, they're up there having a meeting right now, kind of one-on-one with some different organizations, Judge Good is up there with him, so, we're getting a little more, a little more formed here, so, we should start moving in a bigger, more permanent direction. So, the next meeting will be September fifteenth, we'll get there later. Which, I mean, now till the end of the year, all of the mystery meetings will be at nine one one, you made a six-twenty green road. Just remember that, there'll be no more down here early loading and all that, what's going on, so, we'll be up on the hill. And I think, we got a couple, Kathy, I know, asked me if she could speak after the CAC.
I said it.
You want us to babysit?
Yeah, well.
She smiled at me a while ago.
Her mother is a nurse and works on, I babysit on Thursday, so, she's going through a stage where she doesn't go to many people, and had nobody keep her. I am here, as you know, for the second meeting in a row, but unlike the gentleman that oversees the jail, I am asking for money. So, I know we've talked a few times, and text, and emailed, and I get, and I'd like to thank both Sarah and Heather from the Honor's Office for their patience in educating me, and on the different kind of funds, and what the ARP can be spent for, and so on, and from what I've found from other counties, and from what Heather and I've talked, you know, the, the American Rescue Funds or Plan Funds can be moved by re, you know, re-advertising your plan, and can move money into other categories, and, you know, I, when I came to you a few weeks ago, you know, what is going on at this point in the community specifically had not been going on, and had no knowledge of that, I think it's probably obvious that when you get something high-profile, it brings the rest of things into perspective, and the Children's Advocacy Center is the first line of defense. I mean, they work with the state police, and they do the forensic interviews for, for the, the victims and the alleged perpetrators, and, you know, everybody's innocent until they're being guilty, but the whole idea is that the interviews be conducted in such a manner that there is nothing that's messed up, so that, in fact, it can be admitted as evidence, and that child that has been interviewed, they are taped, and they never have to and they never have to go into court in front of their, the person that's victimized them. I've never said it before publicly, I've never even told my own mother or father, my father's deceased, my mother's still alive. But I am an abuse survivor, I have a friend here with me, she is too. And I don't say victim anymore, we're survivors. And if there had been some kind of a, an awareness, an educational program in the schools when I was a child, I might have known that there were people to go to about these things. I might have known when somebody told me that they won't believe you or when they told you, you know, it'll destroy your family or when they told you, you know, mine was an outside person, it wasn't nobody, family or anything. But, you know, when they tell you they'll harm your family, when they tell you things and you're an introverted child. And I know most of you know me from the railroad for many years and don't think of me as introverted, but I was. I got my education at the Jefferson County Circuit Courts Office and it was either speak up or get stomped on. And I learned to speak up and defend myself in, in clauses. And I know that we've kind of been, I feel like I'm on a merry-go-round going in circles with funding because there are, there are particular resources and funds that you know are there and, you know, I haven't gotten any commitment. I don't, as far as I know, the CAC has, first and foremost, I am not an employee of the CAC, I am not a volunteer for the CAC. I am here as a survivor, knowing what perhaps they could have done for me and wanting them to be there to do that for my grandchildren and their grandchildren. And so I'm asking if you've found what source you can take it out of, if you're ready to commit and if so, have you talked about an amount? I'm trying to be patient, but I'm not a very patient person. Well, can we discuss an amount tonight? I mean, if not now, when? I mean, is, I know you have to say an amount and advertise it or whatever and so until.
That would have to come out of the county council, the commissioners.
Right, but. You have to submit it. You have to submit it to the county council and nothing's been submitted to them yet, other than the.
It's been two weeks, okay?
Right.
So, I mean, it takes a little bit of time. There are other organizations asking for funding. It took us an extensive, from August through, May, through the plan in April.
I understand the entire budget process, I used to come every year.
Well, this has nothing to do with the budget process, that was, this was the plan for the ARP funds, okay? So we've tried to work to that, we've tried to be fair, we've tried to hand it out to folks, so I don't think, well, I don't know what I, I would, I know that we did not want to just jump at whatever came around and hand money to, so we took our time and did it. So I'm sorry that you don't have patience, but it's going to take patience before we come up with an amount that we're going to publicly say that we're going to commit to. Because we want to make sure it's a fair amount and we want to make sure it's fair for others as well, so.
Do you have a timeframe?
I mean, so we're going to put together some guidelines for nonprofits, hopefully we'll get that through within the month. So it'll be early October, we'll probably have meetings where people other than those that have already come, that can present what they're interested in.
Are you looking at long-term resources rather than ARP funds that could keep this in the budget in the future?
Oh yeah, we have to look at that because ARP is, it's only one time.
Right, and that's, that's my question. Right.
So yeah, there's, there's possibilities, a couple find there.
Well, I mean.
There's a limited supply that we are used for that.
I, I, I do understand that, but I also look, when we are number one out of twenty-four counties in abuse and assault, sexual abuse and physical abuse on children. We are number one out of the twenty-four counties that the Children's Advocacy Center serves. And we give Jefferson County, we Jefferson County give the least amount of money and use it the most. There's something wrong here. I'm passionate about it and I'm sad about it.
Was there any other comments from the general audience? I think that's it, Ron, trying to get.
Yeah, yes.
That'd have to be on that topic if anyone else wants to speak, so.
I would like to ask a question, how, what is the procedure to get on the agenda?
So you need to contact Sarah.
Sarah?
Ahead of the meeting.
And how do we contact her?
File the number for the courthouse, you get her email address, which is I'm sure at the bottom of the, the agenda, the very bottom.
Sarah Morgan, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
All in favor, adjourned, please say aye.
I thought I heard you mention discussing the, the five hundred thousand dollar fund. The. Economic development, yes, I heard that mentioned.
I mean, I'm, when you asked me, I mentioned we got a scope for the study and I was going to pass it to them so they could review it and that would be extended to the schedule.
A scope for the study? There's a scope for the study?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's not going to be voted on tonight? Is that going to be made available to the public before it is voted on?
Sure, we're going to have to look at it.
Yes, I would like to see it because from what I, what I'm aware, from what I'm aware of, it involves the Jefferson Proving Ground and that is privately held. And in the past, the owner has not been amenable to selling sections and if he is, then I think it needs to be brought up that, like a price and signed. And if the county's not interested in buying it, if it's for talking about for development. We have a lot of entrepreneurs that are very smart, that, you know, are smart enough to figure out how they could purchase and use land at the proving ground if and when it becomes available. I spent since nineteen ninety-five at the railroad, we were the first property owners in the Jefferson Proving Ground through the base closure process. The Port Authority, Madison Port Authority, City of Madison Port Authority, I was the one that handled that. And we acquired building two sixteen and Engine House, we acquired a ten thousand square foot building. We acquired fifteen miles of railroad. And so I'm familiar with the process from beginning to end on a base closure and on the current owner and the fact that he has never, and I've been involved in several deals where supposedly the owner was going to sell land and then backed out. So I would personally, as a taxpayer, want to see something in writing saying that he in fact, not just is willing to entertain thinking about it, but that he in fact has it for sale at a price. Because otherwise, that is money down the drain that could be used for these not-for-profits or other, other purposes. And I, I, you know, I have forty-three years' experience and since nineteen ninety-five at the Jefferson Proving Ground. And I personally have dealt with individuals on numerous occasions and have never been successful at purchasing what would have been an acre of land that was of no value to this person. And it was not for, it's never been able to be purchased. And I was personally involved in a deal where CSX came in and they said they would never deal with this landowner again because he raised the price twice during the deal and they would not be caught in a deal like that. So I want to see things in writing before we study something that may or may not be for sale. That's all.
As I told you on the phone, I will talk to him. Right? Did I tell you that?
Yes, but I want it on record, I want it on record that I, as, as a taxpayer, I'm requesting this because there is nobody in this community that has more experience than I do at the Jefferson Proving Ground having been, been the Togo West from the Department of the Army, flew to Madison, to the railroad and brought me the deed to the property. We were the first landowners. I know that inside, that situation inside and out. And I do not see that there would, would be a benefit unless he signs something saying a suggestive price and that he is willing to sell, sell, because otherwise it's a, it's a futile exercise and a waste of money, in my opinion. So I've been there, done that for thirty years with the individual. So I hope your experience is different, but even still, if the county is not the one going to purchase it, I think we have many entrepreneurs in the community and outside with money, that if they find out he'll sell pieces, they're smart enough to go figure out how to develop. Just my personal opinion, but that comes from very, very many years of experience on that thirty-five hundred acres you're speaking of.